All board members are present with the exception of Shannon. We will start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The agenda is approved. Comments and requests from visitors? Are there any comments and requests from visitors? I don't see anyone. So fiscal year institutional agenda, so this is the, I guess, the first meeting of our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay, first official board meeting. And there's a number of just fiscal year stuff on our consent agenda, so I'll run through it quickly for those that don't have a board packet in front of them. Expenditure authorization, so this is to authorize the Superintendent and Director of Business Services to make expenditures for the La Croix School District within budget parameters. This is, the second item is to have a student representative to the school board so that this allows up to four student senate representatives to serve as student board members. Also designating our official publication as the Coltspring Record for any district publication needs. The annual agenda calendar, so included in the board packet is our administrative calendar and it's adopting that calendar. It's adopting the board member per diem rate for the fiscal year 2019. And so the rates are...
Can I ask that we take that off and discuss that?
Okay, we'll take that off. And I'll keep going through this. Let's see, authority to make electronic transfers, so this allows the Superintendent and Director of Business Services to make electronic transfers for 2019. There's also, the seventh item is official depositories for fiscal year 2019 and that is to designate Granite Community Bank, PNA, Minnesota Trust, and Minnesota School District Liquid Assets Fund as official depositories for the La Croix School District. Legal counsel for 2019, it is recommending or is designating a number of different firms for different needs, but includes Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney, Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, and Robin Dell, Woken, and Zimmerman, and then also Kennedy and...
Grayban.
Grayban, thank you. Kennedy and Grayban for legal counsel for La Croix School District. And then also Columbus and Veterans Day Resolution are required to adopt this resolution to allow school business to be conducted on Columbus Day and Veterans Day. But that's a resolution, so that's not part of the consent agenda. So subtract that, sorry. I'm just realizing that's not part of the consent agenda, so I apologize. But, so everything else, those eight items. So Lynn, you're suggesting that we take off the per diem?
Per diem, just to have a discussion.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just so that, it doesn't say Kennedy in the minutes that are out there, but it was intended to be in.
It has it in the packet.
I just...
It doesn't in everybody's...
It doesn't in the packet. In the note I sent to you, it does have it.
It doesn't.
It's in there. I downloaded at five.
We just opened it when we got here.
It's right after Maloney and then it says Ann Kennedy and Grayban.
Yep.
And then, yep.
But I have a question on that one. I'm wondering if we can just pull that out too.
Okay, yep, let's pull that out. Okay, so is there, is there a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda with the exclusion of our legal counsel for fiscal year 2019 as well as our board rate, board number per diem for 2019? I'll make that motion. Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. The amended fiscal year consent agenda is approved. So let's take them out and we'll talk about them in order that they were proposed. The first one is the board member per diem rate for 2019.
I'm just concerned that that hasn't gone up and that it's getting harder and harder for someone who might be interested in being on the board, to run for the board if, you know, they have to take off work or if they have to pay for daycare so that they can be a board member. So, you know, at some point it needs to be adjusted. And I think we're low compared to a lot of other districts around.
Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess my initial thought was that, you know, maybe some discussion about, you know, permitting because there's been a lot of extra this year that's, you know, not, you know, included on this, but then, you know, they had mentioned that that had been tried before and then it took...
A lot of boards do that and as long as it's not abused, it's okay, but...
Or could you do...
Well, you have to designate, you know, what people get compensated for when they're assigned to committees. So it's like, okay, you know, if you're on the curriculum committee meeting or you go to other curriculum or other type, the technology, you know, are those included? Or is it just regular board member board meetings when the whole board is here?
That's what I would think.
Yeah, I would say that you'd only get, like, I see, if we're gonna do anything, we keep this stipend and then only if there are special full board meetings, then there would be an extra amount for those special meetings. Does that make sense?
I completely agree with that.
We should start paying for every committee that...
Does that get complicated from a business office perspective? As, you know, if we're having special meetings to keep track of that and get it in the payroll or...
Well, they're all in board book.
Historically, we haven't had very...
Many special meetings?
Yeah, almost none.
Right.
Also though, okay, it would stay the same for the months where we only have one meeting? So it's still the 250 per month plus a stipend for any other additional meetings? Is that what we're suggesting?
Well, I just, I just threw that out there. I was, I don't know that we want to start paying for every committee meeting.
No.
Because then we have to, then we have to be very careful that no one committee, no one board member gets more committees than another and that's just...
Well, how I feel about this, from my personal perspective, I think the idea of paying board members maybe a little bit more than just what is, what's here. Just because, for example, for me, I have to pay daycare because my husband works most Monday nights. So I probably don't really make money doing the board, not that I'm doing it for the board. And so I've thought a lot about that, like, if you give people a larger stipend, does this process become more small D democratic, you know, like where it's more...
More people have the opportunity to...
Right, but I don't think you can really pay board members enough to make it where somebody who's, you know, on the edge, like, I don't know if I can quite swing this financially. I don't think, I don't think increasing the amount really accomplishes that. And then I don't know if you're drawing the right people either, if they're thinking of it as like a part-time job or something. So I don't know. I've thought a lot about this over the years, but I don't know that increasing the rates really does what, what you really want it to do. What would be to get people to run that, you know, would be...
Although right now, we might have a hard time getting people to run based on what they know we've been doing over the last, at least, year and a half, how much time we've been putting into and how much our commitment it's been. But hopefully that's gonna change. But so that, I don't know, I don't know if increasing the stipend will change that perception or not. I worry that, you know, what do we, we've got open seats and are we gonna have even enough people to run to fill the open seats?
Have you heard of people that have been interested?
Maybe.
People I've asked have said no. They've said thanks, but no thanks.
Okay. I have somebody that I'm talking to?
Indirectly right now, but yeah.
Okay. And I know of one person that's maybe considering it, but I don't know. The money has never come up in questions about running for the board.
You know, it is our time and if somebody does have to, you know, miss work or whatever, it doesn't hardly compensate for the time you're missing work.
What are other districts doing in our area?
I don't know.
Do you know?
I know St. Cloud is quite a bit more, but I don't know about the other...
I think it's the bigger school districts, it's more, but I don't know. I always thought when we looked at it, because I think we raised it $50 a couple of years ago.
2014.
Okay, 2014. I was on the board, so, yeah, okay, yeah, set in 2014. So it was raised then by nominal amount. But I think at that point we were relatively similar. And I think part of the discussion too has always been, you know, in negotiations and such to kind of demonstrate that we're not drafting resources from the district ourselves, but I don't know.
Professionals need to be compensated fairly and it's, you know, similar position. We need to be compensated for our time.
Yeah.
This is an uncomfortable conversation to have, I think, but, I mean, I never thought about the compensation as I was running. But over the last year and a half and all the time that it's taken away from my family, you start to think, really?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's where it has started to kind of bother me. But I'm missing out on a lot with my family to be here. And it's been more than just some committee meetings and your one or two board meetings a night. And they've been long board meetings. And so that's where I think it has come into my mind.
Yeah, and I would agree. I'd have to take vacation days from my job to attend that. So, I mean, that's time that takes away from my family that I would normally have. And that's not, I mean, I didn't think about that or consider that. I mean, it was just, you know, I want to do this because this is what's best for the district and what, you know, I can yell my kids out, you know, I think this is a way that I can benefit them. But yeah, I think there's a balance and what's that good balance? You know, I don't, I don't know exactly whether to go. Because it's hard for me to say without having some data from other places because I don't know where we stand. And I guess my mindset is always, you don't want to be the top and you don't want to be the bottom. And so, and so doing negotiations and stuff, you know, I feel like we need, you know, data. You know, what are the other districts? And I think it would be appropriate for us to just say, oh, let's do 50 bucks without having any members to say, you know, this is what other districts that are comparable. I just think we need to do our homework before we can...
Can we table this until the next board meeting and do the research and then come up with a number that would be fair?
Does that affect, how does, how does that affect, I mean, in a small way, but how does that affect payroll? Is that confusing? Oh, it's every six months.
Put your pays...
We don't have to pay until December, so...
Yeah, we already have paid for this one.
Okay, so let's just table this then.
One of the things that you might table, if you belong to an ed district and you also have a conference and there might be a couple of things. And I, you know, Jason, I don't know what they do at the ed district. Do they, do they pay board members at all?
Yeah, it's, I think it's a hundred bucks, so...
But I think if they took a look at their...
And that went up, I think it was 75.
If you take a look at the schools that belong, our large schools, small schools, then it's a pretty good variety of, and they're in the area.
Right.
And plus our conference schools too. So you could get a pretty good read on that. And I think that Barb would be able to gather that information relatively quick.
And in that regard, you know, Baton Stearns for every meeting is like a hundred dollar stipend. And that could be a number to look at if there was special extra meetings beyond. I mean, that would be comparable to like, you know...
You can, I think it's wise though that you do address it because if you don't, you then find yourself in a situation where you need to adjust it and then it's gonna look like a big adjustment, you know what I'm saying? I think you're better off trying to just keep moving slightly along and...
Yeah, this rate's been at this level for four years.
For me, the lesson, the thing is that, again, you don't want to be the top. You don't want to be the bottom.
Okay.
I think if we're in the middle...
I think you're right though. I think it's a good decision to make with data. And so we'll table this and we'll have some data for the next meeting and we'll discuss it then. Does that work?
Mm-hmm. So then we wouldn't need a motion at all just because it's maintaining the same, there's no change?
Right.
Right. Well, actually, well...
Or do we need to make a motion to keep it the same?
You're actually...
This is...
So we're told that out of the consent?
Yeah, no, no, but she's saying, well, how do you, what's, against the action? July 1.
It's tabled in the decision.
But I don't think it matters because we're not drawing...
You just go on a contingency of the previous contract.
And so there's no change until the actual new contract is...
And there's, yeah, there's no...
Nothing will change until you add.
Because it isn't, it isn't July 1, you know what I mean? And we've had meetings, so it's not, it's fiscal year 19 started on July 1st, so, yeah, I think we're okay.
Which the first payment is in December.
Right.
So it's plenty of time to make adjustments.
Two weeks enough for you, Barb, to gather that information? Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, then the next, let's move on then. The next item of business is legal counsel. And I was able to demonstrate my inability to pronounce last names.
Kennedy, Grayban.
It's really hard.
Say Kennedy, Grayban in the wording. It doesn't say it in the bottom recommendation. Oh, I see.
So it's, yeah. So it's in, it's in the text of the...
Yeah, the recommendation. So my question on this is if we are using the legal firms of the Ratwick, Ann Kennedy, as legal counsel for educational issues and concerns, how, by adding another firm, how are we gonna decide which areas of...
I think it would be, it'd depend on what the situation happens to be. And the firm that, there are two reasons that I'm interested in adding them.
Okay.
One is because the individual we work with is really good at employment law and really dealing with employee disciplinary issues.
Okay.
And we've used that firm just lately to do that. Financially, they do give a discount for the school districts.
Are you talking about Kennedy or about...
Kennedy.
Okay, so we plug them in?
Yep, they're, we use both as the need arises, okay? And the other thing is they do have a St. Cloud office, which means you don't have to pay mileage for somebody to drive out from the Twin Cities.
Okay.
They just have to come up the road seven or eight miles. So you have the strength of a large Twin City firm with the cost of a rural firm. And they also have brought a bond counsel and also election officers. They're a full-service firm. So it may be that Barb says, I'm interested in a bond issue or refinancing, Beth does. They have a bond consultant or a bond attorney who could help us. And the bond attorney at Flynn has, the one we've used is retired, right? So I think we give some options to our administrative team to fix, to pick the law firm that works best for us.
And then are they, is there pricing? I know you talked about the travel, but is their pricing equal or what are we...
In fact, Kennedy, Grayban is cheaper. Their hourly rate is less.
And that wasn't included? There wasn't any documentation on that, right?
No, no.
Okay, I was gonna say.
I didn't include that. It's a professional service, so you can, it's kind of like hiring a, an architect or an engineer. You know, the school district has the option to pick who fits their needs the best. It doesn't have to be a bidding situation. It's a professional service.
If something came up, our new superintendent could call and say, okay, what's your rate on dealing with this? And what's your expertise? Because a lot of times it's, if somebody has dealt with an issue, they have the expertise and they don't have to do the research on it.
Right.
And I always hate paying to do the research. I ran into that on some real estate issue.
But you want them to do the research. If they don't, if they haven't done it recently.
Yeah, but it's like, okay, you know, I was working with a legal firm in St. Cloud and the person who was writing my leases to begin with had a lot of research. They transferred me to somebody new who didn't. So he charged me $500 to look at my old lease that they had written in their office. So it's like, wait a second, this is crazy because you guys wrote it.
What's up?
So are we comfortable with adding them as an option?
Okay.
I would make a motion to designate Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney, Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, Robin Dell, Woken, and Zimmerman, Ann Kennedy, and Grayban Law Firm as legal counsel for our school district.
Second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. You did a lot better job pronouncing the names, Sunny.
Perfect.
Okay, next up, Columbus and Veterans Day Resolution. I accidentally added this when I was speaking, but this would be part of the consent agenda. It's not, it's a resolution, so a separate order of business will do a roll call vote. But basically this is just legally required for us to do business on these days.
Motion to authorize the school to conduct business on Columbus Day and Veterans Day.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Well, resolution.
Oh, resol, oh, sorry, thank you, I'm sorry.
Aye, Lisa.
Aye.
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 The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Lynn. All right, this is our regular consent agenda and I'll try to roll through this quickly as well. Approval of minutes from June 25th and special meetings on June 9th, or July 10th, or July 9th, July 10th, and July 13th. The treasures report, approval of bills, employment, extending employment for a new early childhood teacher, Denon Nap Bakery, Bakery, is that, hopefully I pronounced that right, as a new preschool teacher and, let's see. Use of school property for Bonnefest, there's a resignation coming from third grade teacher at Richmond Elementary, James Kula. Donation, let's, okay, it's included in the consent agenda, a donation of three Dell laptops to the Vex Robotics Club, but we're gonna have to pull that out of the consent agenda and do a resolution for that.
We can either do it that way or we could do a roll call on the whole thing, whichever.
Okay, or we could do a whole roll call on the whole thing. Okay, perfect. So, so donation from Cold Spring, formerly Cold Spring Granite for the Vex Robotics Clubs, which is great. School resource officer contract, we've been working on that, that contract and updating it. And then leave of absence request from Christine Olson, lunch prices. We, director, food service director Barker is recommending that we increase school lunches by five cents, just as a point of information. We are, this, this is to bring us more in line with what MDE is recommending and we are below that, but we keep it a little bit below that because we have a healthy...
Fund balance.
Fund balance in that department. And so we choose instead of going up to the rate that MDE recommends, to keep it lower because we can, so. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by, motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Sunny. And we'll make this a resolution. We'll make the whole thing a resolution just because of the donation. All those, or any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye and this is a roll call.
Aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved. Okay, action item, approval of a superintendent. We have been working vigorously to, thank you, Beth. Yeah, come on up, Beth. And Beth has been extraordinarily helpful with gathering data and helping prepare the contract. She was. And we are, have worked with Brad last week to work out a contract agreement. And, yeah, so this is, I guess, the summation of a long process that we've been going through and you have the, the contract attached in the board packet. I don't know if there's anything that you wanna...
Yeah, we just did a handout for you so you could see the cost summary and then also some comparisons to our local districts, the other members of Baton Stearns, and then a couple of neighbors of ours, and then also Brad's former district as well.
So we wanted to include some comp data and that was part of the base salary. We also spent a lot of time looking at overall compensation package and compared it to where we were with a compensation package, so total cost of benefits and everything. And then we kind of laid out the contract and looked at the cost for the new contract that we were negotiating. And we also looked at where Brad was at in Aiken. The district is smaller and the responsibilities because of that are just a little bit less. And we felt like this contract brought it, was, it was an increase from where he would have been in Aiken, but it's also below where we were at and we felt like it was aligned with...
It's appropriate given his experience.
Experience.
Yep, and Brad did have a chance to review it and he is ready to sign as soon as we approve.
And he...
And we also made some changes in the language to make it more consistent with the other administrative contracts that we have...
Correct.
As far as health insurance and incentive pay.
And the holidays.
Yes, correct. So there's some of the language in the contract was changed, yes, to make it more aligned with the administrative contracts. There was also some, like, cleaning up of some of the language that was a little confusing as far as what was...
And wasn't there some language that had to be changed according to the statute now I'm giving notice?
Yeah, we, there was some extra language and there's a statute that applies to teachers and there's one little part of it that applies to superintendents. And so we took out most of that statute that was in our previous contracts. What we have in our contract as far as language is really similar to what Sac Rapids has and they just hired their new superintendent as well. And then we had, we go look it over too, so.
It was, yes. Yep, and they had a few tiny or small suggestions, just, again, we felt like it made it better. It was just clear, clearer language. It didn't really, it didn't change the intent of the document, it was just clarified language. Are there any questions that you guys have?
And then the first year is actually prorated based on the fact that he's starting in August?
Yep, correct. Yep, and we did discuss that and it is also included in the contract, to be explicitly clear. But we did run this also through Stacy and John, whether you looked at it as well, but Stacy reviewed it in payroll, just to make sure there'll be no hiccups or issues with, with that as well. So that's all clear.
I like the changes that were made, so I would make a motion to approve the contract.
Motion by Lynn?
Oh, second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. The contract is approved. That's kind of a big deal.
It's a very big deal.
It's a big deal.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a big deal for you and it's also probably a very big deal for Brad. He's probably watching.
I'm wondering if I can email him his resignation in at Aiken tonight.
Yes, I was gonna call him, yes.
Are you gonna call?
Well, you can, if you want to email him right now or call him, that'd be great.
Okay, I will.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, they're having a special board meeting tomorrow night. To handle that, so, just to give him his, his time. Okay, let's see, let's get back in our agenda. Oh, just, so, oh wait, no, 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 we have approval to BSN Sports. So we'll put, we put this in action items. So approval of the payment to BNS, BSN Sports.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if you want to.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve or pay BSN Sports an amount of $13,382.93, check number 99402.
Second. Motion by Jason, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The payment is approved. Discussion items. Hopefully Brad's not watching live streaming right now because I wanna talk about this when he's not here, but if he is, that's okay. I just wanted to have a quick discussion. It doesn't need to be a great length. But I didn't know if there's something you want me to do, or for the district office to do, to just prepare Brad and make sure that him and his family feel welcome. I was personally thinking about maybe getting some recorie gear, him and his wife some recorie gear as a gift from myself, just thinking of different ways to make him feel welcome as to a part of the community. If there's anything that you guys feel like you want us to do?
It's been done historically, Lynn.
I can't remember. I don't know that there has been, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if we did some kind of reception or something either.
That'd be good.
I said that would be good. It would give the community opportunity.
Meet them if they-
It's like if we wanted to do, and that's some of the discussions that we've had. I did call Carolyn's to see if there was something that we wanted to do in tandem, and she, we both agreed that we would think about it. We didn't know if we could do like a Cookies and Punch Community Welcome, or if there's something else that's more in the spirit of our district. I mean, there's gonna be the typical start of school workshop days and stuff like that, where you'll have an opportunity to, to meet people and all of that. But I didn't know if there's something we want to-
And it would be nice to have something that's more social.
Right.
So people can interact. And one of the things, was it in his interview or one of the others' candidates who said we should have more parties in our district?
I do like the idea of some sort of welcome basket.
Coming from the board would be really nice, so that it would be-
Okay, I didn't wanna make you guys feel like you had to do something, but I think, I mean-
I get from the board.
Yeah, but in addition to recorie gear, maybe they're gonna give cards to some, like, to two businesses in each, you know, in each community, so that it gives them an opportunity to go and visit.
Okay.
Actually, we do something I got for our teachers.
Right. Likes golf.
Golf officials. Cause some of the, I know-
They both write the chorus.
Right.
You know, he starts right before the, the week of the, like, the Cold Spring Parade. Cause that's, that's, yeah, that's the 19th. I don't know if there would be any way to do, you know, like, a community, at one of our buildings, a community open house type thing to-
People, right?
Yeah, and I don't know the schedule of those events, but that, where people are already in town, it might be a nice way to just make it easy for the community to have a chance.
It's a good idea.
Does the board ever do a parade? Are they in the parade? Are you guys in the parade?
We talked about that. The problem we ran into is everyone had commitments, because my business is in the parade, so I already am in it, and other people had other commitments.
We're usually, well, you won't, you know, Jason.
Okay, well, how about this? How about I look into Bonnefest? I'll have to talk to the, the bigwigs with that.
I can, no, I'm home town pride.
Oh, you're home town pride, okay.
I have the name of one of, I quote, "Chera" in the stands.
Okay.
I have the name of the main-
Okay, so I'll, I'll look into that. I'll look into a welcome basket. I'll look at what we do for teachers.
Or even if we do, that's on Saturday and Sunday, even do something that Friday afternoon.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, or is there still?
No, it's not partial.
Well, Saturday, Saturday activities don't start till 5:00, I believe, so even if you did something-
On Saturday afternoon earlier.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll look into it, and maybe that doesn't work with, with Brad's schedule. But I'll look into that, and I'll make sure that stuff happens.
I'll send that in.
Okay, perfect. Does that, does that work, Saturday?
The 13th, so it's the week, the Monday before all of that. So, he's already ours.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, all right, so, okay, anything else that you wanna add?
Nope, I think you guys, very exciting.
Okay, elementary enrollment. There's some updated enrollment numbers for elementary's level that every man included in the board packet.
You know, we are so fortunate today that we have some principals here who could talk about elementary enrollment real quickly. I sent you a note, I sent you a note with some information on it too, but I think this will be more current, and this information changes from-
Right, did it?
Yeah, it's about that fast. And there are a couple of things, and we all know that when, when people leave the district, sometimes they don't let you know, and when they arrive, of course, they let you know. So, we wanna make sure the numbers are right. And so, these three folks can tell you more about enrollment than you probably ever wanna find. So, welcome.
Thanks, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
We, we've had quite an exceptional summer, I think, of new enrollies this summer. I think if you look at the numbers right now, we're looking at about 41, and I think we have a couple still waiting out there. Couple of hotspots, I think, to, for you guys to manage and look at. We talked about last year, ahead of the appeals process, coming to you in July, just to give you an update, so that we can maybe avoid a workshop week approval of a hiring. I will say that for me, it has worked out okay, because I've found some great finds the day of workshop, for like three years straight. But it's a little stressful. If we can avoid that, that would be great. Couple of places to look at, I think, first grade, right now, Rockville and Richmond are both, Rockville's at 20, which is the top of the ceiling, and Richmond's over at 22. And because we've done an attrition from four sections to three, to first grade at Cold Spring Elementary, we're sitting at 25s and 26s, which I can't, I can't in good faith endorse that.
And we've checked to make sure that, or, what kind of communication have we had with parents on students that were here last year to make sure they haven't moved? Have we been able to do anything?
Yep, Lorraine has been pretty good on following up on rumors and calls and emails. As far as right now, we, we think that's fairly accurate. As John said, there's gonna be a few that will just drop and not tell us that we didn't have any inkling of, but it would take quite a few drops without us knowing to get that within a reasonable range. So, that's one area. I think we're looking at third grade also. We're at five sections across the district, and I think Rockville's sitting pretty high.
We're at 26 at Rockville.
22s and 23 consistently between Cold Spring and Richmond.
And I think the ceiling there is 22, or the class size balances.
And that's not including our 10% overage, right?
No.
Okay.
Do you have a sense if you did, you know, another first grade teacher, if there was any kids in Richmond, Rockville that would move to Cold Spring?
Um, Richmond, I would have to go with a hard no on that. That's the group that we appealed through last year, where we had all the requests, and we went through the process, and we're pretty adamant that that's where those folks wanna be. Good question.
Probably pretty similar commitment to stay in, in Rockville at this point, with families. I would have, I would have one appeal that we, one family we talked to that wanted to go to Cold Spring Elementary that we, we did not approve, and they've been contacted and explained to. At first grade, so.
You could probably, even if you didn't require them to know, you could put out a letter saying, "Just in case you're thinking about it, you know, our class size is gonna be high. If you want to, we could move you to Cold Spring with class sizes to be smaller, but you're not required to," or something.
Just to inform them. That's a great idea. People have some problems.
Sometimes things change, like daycare or family situations where, oh, mom's working in St. God now, and it makes sense to drop somebody else on a different-
If you recall last, was it this fall, we talked about a new timeline for appeals, and I would say that has been working very well. We just met on all the appeals that we did have, and we solved them internally. And so, we can stay out of the appeals room. And now, as of July 10th, according to our new timeline, there is no more appeals. So, anybody that is now registered or upfront with them, that is our decision where they're placed. So, we're gonna avoid appeals on, you know, the midnight hour in August also, which I think is a good thing.
So, and with that, when you say that you solved them internally, were those people new to district, or just wanted changes within?
Some of them, most of them were new to district. So, we just looked at the numbers and made some swaps. There was somebody that wanted to go everywhere. I think there was someone that wanted to go from Cold Spring to Richmond, and Cold Spring to Rockville, and Rockville to Cold Spring. So, we just worked out the numbers, and we're confident where we're at outside of, you know, some of the obvious things in front of us with some of the class sizes.
Okay.
So, that's what we're kinda asking you to just take another look at tonight, and-
What, what, where are these, is Beth still here? Darn it.
I have questions.
How much extra money does it bring in?
How much, right, right. Where are budget estimates for enrollment? You know, what's our revenue projections, and where are we over, and how does this fit in the budget?
I think they're, I think they're pretty close, but what you're gonna run into is if you've got 25, 25, and 26, that's, that's a higher number. But to add another staff member, it's, it's probably gonna be not a real profitable situation. It costs a lot of money. You know, one of the things, these are really smart folks at the table there. They have really good ideas on how to handle class size and how to deal with it. And there might be some tools that they have in their tool bag that might be able to do some things. There could, sometimes people go with a, a half-time teacher, or they buy, they use TAs, they use other support. Putting caring adults in the room, which, you know, I don't wanna say it keeps the cost down, but it keeps it manageable, and it also gives you some flexibility to move between, move kids around a little bit. But if you're gonna hire a teacher, and you're looking at getting a teacher, you're gonna be put in a position where you wanna make that move pretty soon. I know that, Mary, you're gonna hire somebody right now, right?
Yes, correct. The third grade to replace Mr. Kula.
Right, and it would really be a blessing if you could find a real talented person who is a TA right now that has a teaching license, if you knew somebody like that. That would give you some flexibility to work with too. Rule of thumb is if you're taking a look at the kids that are coming in, elementary kids, about $7,000 a kid, just, you will just take that as a rule of thumb. When you add everything in, and it's a secondary kid, you know, this rule of thumb is probably you're, you're close to 10 grand. So, if you're talking 14 kids, and you have another real issue too here. Space might be a problem. If you're looking at the two smaller schools, space could be an issue, right? So, the flex school is really the school here. And one of the things that we've decided as industry to take a look at is to say, if EL kids are in one community, we'd like to keep them in the school that they're in, close to their family, close to their brothers and sisters or sibs. So, that adds a little wrinkle to it also, so. You know, I guess, I'd, I'd ask you guys, if you had some recommendations or ideas right now you could share with the board to help them, and to give them some options.
I think one thing to think about is, as this, for me, the hot one is the first grade. That moves to second grade. This class size stays the same, so it's gonna move on to next year as well with the potential of kids, so it's not just a one-year.
Well, if we added a section to first grade, that puts us at about, that puts us at, I think, right around 19 kids a classroom, which is on the upper range of our classroom. I mean, it's not like we're going below range.
No.
The big thing is though, where does this put us from a budget standpoint?
Well, even that, though, they may not want to be there. I mean, we could equally divide them if we added a teacher, but that may not be the basis of the money.
Even if you leave Richmond and Rock, cause Rockville's at 20, Richmond's at 22, if you leave them alone, we're still looking at 16 kids.
They're all apparently at Cold Spring.
You could make those four 19.
And you might have some additional kids coming too. Financially, budget, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lose a lot of sleep about the budget right now with that. I think, is Beth here?
No.
Okay, good, I can say that. You don't have to worry too much about that. I think that you could, you can fit that in.
I don't, I don't know how you'd do a first grade class with 26 kids, no.
And remember, K, you know, 1, 2, 3 primary grades, you know, that's where they learn to read, and after that, we leave to learn, so.
I'm gonna have to manage some-
Space?
Space will be fine. Space, space isn't an issue, but if we do put 26 in there, we're gonna have to do something for support.
Question, do you know in first grade, are there any, or how many of the kids in there might have paros working with them already? Are there special needs students in there? So, there are other adults in the room? Cause one of the issues sometimes is they have too many adults if you have a pair or something in there.
Yeah, there's paros at every grade. Trying to think, there's a, there's a, there's some needs in their first grade group, so there are adults in the room already.
Kids that are being pulled out?
No, I mean, both. It's both.
But mostly in?
Yes. And there, those, those adults are assigned to those kids.
Right.
So, it's hard to pull them into other classes.
I just see this, you know, in regards to the budget, I mean, this is where we can have the greatest impact on our kids and our district. And if we are gonna end up spending extra money, I feel like that's the biggest bang for the buck regardless, because that's where you're gonna get the most impact.
First grade is like learning to read.
Right, like, that's what I'm saying. It's the basics. You gotta have core basics, and if you don't have those core stuff, because you have so many kids, I just-
Now, that being said, there are other needs throughout the grades too. There's a, there's a few other ones that are pushing, you know, looking at Rockville, 26th and third grade.
Now, you've got the same number of kids you had last year in the building, but they, they don't, I don't think those kids-
They're a nice little group.
They're not a street view as well. Adults. Could I ask you guys a question? If you waited until the 13th and gathered more information and put your heads together and came with a recommendation on the 13th for action by the board, would that give you enough time to do what you needed to do? Or is that a little tight?
Especially 20 days.
Especially if you're interviewing already.
Was that too tight?
It's probably a little tight. Just knowing that we already have the candidate pool, I mean, just across teaching positions is already small. You know, I've told the story before, but my first year here, I would have 250 applicants for a job. And now, I am pleased with 20.
Yeah.
So, the pool's already low, so if they're gonna continue to get picked off, the longer we wait too.
And this is a good location for, for searching too, because you've got colleges close by too, so.
Are you interviewing already? We will be next week. We're looking for dates right now. Okay. Jesus' letter just came through, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, the streamlining of that process, I don't know.
I guess I lean toward us seriously considering approving a fourth section for first grade tonight, and then maybe on August 13th, you could come with other ideas for addressing the other high-class numbers, whether that's a part-time TA or something else that could help. But, I mean, that, that's three sections that are very high. And if we don't do something about it now, like you said, it's just gonna carry into the next year when they're in second grade.
And we are down a section from last year, so we did, that was one of our, our natural reductions.
So, and do you remember where enrollment was last year? I know it's, it was in a state of flux for nine months too, but roughly are we the same for kids? Richmond is the same?
Rockville's the same.
Yep, I was at about, just under 500 last year, and it looks like it's at 45 right now.
Okay.
Just, they just, the kids don't follow, right? So, would you, would the board be interested in making a motion tonight to add that other section? And then to deal with, take a look at what's happening on the 13th in relationship to the other two buildings? You may need to make some sort of adjustment staffing-wise, maybe TA, maybe adult support, and maybe something else, shared teachers, I don't know, but these guys can figure out some good things. You can even give the authority, you know, well, if you'd like to do that, I won't stand in the way of that. First grades are really keystone grade level, but they all are, but.
To me, our class size numbers look really good, except for that- To me, our class size numbers look really good, except for that grade.
That's right.
I mean, it, we have a, we have a, I think we have a strong class in, class size policy. And they're all really close, or with one kid over. And considering how difficult it is to balance class sizes, I feel like this is a pretty, this looks pretty good. It's just that one, that one grade and then, and then that Rockville, three. But I don't know, I, I'm nervous without having Beth here and knowing where the budget is and all of that, but...
That's my hesitancy too, but I'm leaning on John's coming up to that.
Yeah, but you take a look at that, take a look at the, if the class size is probably going to be 14 to 16, take that times 7,000, that gives you some kind of idea. I think you can cash some on that too. You're not going to build a fund balance really, but remember, we're not in the banking business, we're in the kid business, right? And, you know, it's kind of hard to go to a parent and say, gee, we can save an extra whatever if we put a few more kids in your son's class.
Right.
I think they would say, eh, you know, I'd rather pay a little more and have my son get a quality education, so. Beth is a real master, she'll make it work. And if they still, they're going to pick up more kids, right? You guys guarantee it?
He solves it all. How do you solve, I mean, I know we're talking about elementary, but where are we at for middle school?
I don't know, I think, what are we looking like, guys? I don't even know where it's you from.
I think when I was in on Wednesday, he sent out seven or eight new requests for record transfers. So that was just on that one day. Shannon will be in Wednesday this week, so I can have her get some better numbers.
The nice thing about the secondary though, you have some flexibility you don't have in the elementary.
Right, I'm just talking about middle school. I understand that with high school, I'm not minimizing the high school piece, but the middle school I know was, was high.
I talked to Beth last week and she said we're almost, not quite yet, but almost at the projection that the board set in the spring.
So we have a little bit of movement space that way.
Yeah.
So we're adding more kids, some kids, come on.
Yeah, if we could get that for next meeting, just so that we're looking at the whole district. I understand the importance on this, but the whole district too would be...
Okay, I'll make a note of that and make sure we do that.
Because that does give us, not a lot of time for action, but maybe if it comes out in the packet and we can all be thinking.
The kids, they generate some more money too. They're trying to make some difference.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, is there, we've had a lot of discussion on, on this, is there consensus? Do you guys have more questions for our building leaders here?
So are we going to make a, make a motion to approve? Because I would make a motion to add a teacher to the first, for first grade.
Okay.
Could I make an adjustment to that just a little bit? To make a motion for an extra staffing for our elementary? And that way they can use it as they need it and put it how they want it. I'm sure it'll go to first grade, but let's say five kids drop out, three kids go to another section. I don't want a hamstring to say, you can only use it for that.
Well, but then I would want to talk, because then I'd want to see how the numbers... You know, I'm, I'm very, I'm very agreeable to a motion of adding a second, a fourth section to first grade based on the numbers that are here. But I don't know if, if those all drop by 16 and they're all down to 20 and we get a couple more in a different, but I don't know that I would automatically say, okay, now just hire another person or something else. You know what I mean?
I might hire them, but remember, once you do this and they go and get them, you've got them.
That's right, yeah.
But as far as, you have the freedom to move a teacher within the district. We have the right of assignment, right?
Right.
We could use that. You're not afraid to, right? There we go. First grade is fine.
Okay. So...
Or you could even be a shared teacher. If it turns out you don't have as many first graders, you could use it, you know, somehow do something there and half the day the person goes over to Rockville to help out with the class, so. And rather have some flexibility in there.
So what flexibility? Okay, okay. Okay, so there's a motion to approve a first grade teacher for Cold Spring Elementary on the table. There's a first. Is there a second? Or do you want to have an amended motion or where are we at?
I would second that.
Okay, so first by Jason, second by Sunny. Are there, is there any further discussion?
Well, if we hire them in first grade and we have the right to reassign them, we've still got the flexibility if something changes, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
And all I would say to that is just to make sure that it's a, an additional teaching staff for first grade like we talked about, not that it would be translated into different support staff. I just want to know that we're hiring a teaching position and the intent with is first grade.
Or a section for first grade.
Elementary teacher.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Okay.
So I've got Jason and Sunny, but I want to know exactly what we're voting on, so that I have the correct motion in here.
So first grade teacher at Cold Spring Elementary is what I understood the motion being.
Licensed teacher at Cold Spring.
Do you want, so do you want to amend, amend the motion for licensed?
First grade elementary teacher at Cold Spring Elementary.
Do you want it amended?
No, I just want to know what's...
Especially if we're going to be sending any electronic copies of it, it's nice to have a hyperlink right in there so people can go right to the particular policies of the district.
Brian did some research into some other area, student handbooks from other districts, and kind of included some of the wording and some ideas from them as well.
We have a good roadmap on the very first page that's really important.
I like that.
There are some old words on there that I'm not even sure where they came from. I'm sure maybe somebody does know, and they've just been living on there forever on the front cover. But I think after Sam and Mary having a year here, it was just the right time for us all to sit down and get on the same page again. I know that's one of the things that you've been asking for is a more consistent experience. So it was kind of important for us to just all sit together and read the handbook. We had a great morning of some coffee and whatever else. These two don't drink coffee, which I don't understand.
Mary and Sam don't?
No.
I don't either.
Wow. So you can serve coffee yourself.
It actually works out well because then I drink the whole pot, which I would do anyway if I wanted to share it.
I have two tiny things. One, and this is just because I have this experience with a neighbor, what is the definition of a spaghetti strap? Because I need to Google that. Because I had a crying first grader over at my house because they didn't know if they could. It was for a program, and they didn't, she, her mom realized that it was probably defined as a spaghetti strap, and it was a little wider, and I don't know, I didn't know what the definition was.
You definitely talked about that?
It's a super tiny recommendation, but the high school I know said one inch.
We just talked about we said one inch.
So I'm looking at page seventy-five, Student Dress Code, so under S's.
For somewhere along the lines, my kids have always got, I mean, they know it has to be three, three of their fingers. I don't know where that's come from.
That'd be fabulous as a parent.
Oh, yeah. Their fingers are a lot smaller than ours.
It sounds silly, but for a parent, that it was like a fancy dress for some program or something, maybe it was dress up day, or I don't remember, but to have just a little clarification on that. And I know the high school has clarified that just a little bit because they probably deal with it more.
Well, we just match with high school does.
Yeah.
We can do that.
It's a tiny, it's a tiny thing.
But it's important.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I noticed, and I'm pretty sure that it was in all of the student handbooks, but referring to us as the Board of Education instead of the School Board, I know we've changed that in policy.
That's because there is no Board of Education in the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
It's School Board.
Okay, so it used to be Board of Education in all of our policies, and we're changing that as we update them to School Board, and so just that update, it's again, super minor.
This is why we really love having Brian intern this summer.
That's just a...
Brian's going to take those changes and do well with them.
Yeah.
I don't think it's perfect, you know, I don't, like, we're going to find changes next summer when I'm done with my hours and Eric will be doing it by himself. You know, we're going to look back a year from now and, you know, see changes and ask ourselves, how do we not catch that last summer? But I think through all this, it's definitely helps us out moving ahead.
This overhaul is way overdue, and I feel much more comfortable with the wording that we have and the stance we have on certain pieces. Because, you know, kids don't really bring CD players or Walkman's disc.
So you never know.
So we definitely need to have that in there.
Never know. The other, this is something I have never thought of to ask in all of our reviews of policies, but do we, is this translated into Spanish at all, or any of the other?
We actually talked about that.
It would be a massive undertaking. Now that it's updated, I don't, I've never asked just because I knew that it probably needed a big overhaul, but I think it would be worth doing now that we have kind of overhauled it, and it's more up to date.
You know, there are some programs out there that'll translate it, and then you can get someone who reads Spanish to go through and compare it and make any...
Add it, make it sense of it.
Yeah, make any fixes. Actually, I have an employee who would help you with that if you needed. She happens to be a parent of a, I think, a first grader.
How did you handle that in some of your other districts?
Usually there's a language line that's available, but we would make handbooks available to students who have a different home language than English.
Okay.
So you could do that relatively easy, too. We do have an asylum who could translate it, but there's also programs that translate it automatically. And I've got your intern will be able to dig that up without any problems.
Okay. That's just, yeah.
And then maybe some other, is there other, other languages as Swans?
Somali.
Somali?
And that's the elementary.
Spanish is probably maybe.
Maybe you've just said this, but if you use, if you use Google or whatever, just have somebody intern review it.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes it doesn't translate.
Yeah, that's right.
Are we opening a can of worms, though, by, I mean, I know we have a high speaking, high Spanish-speaking population, thank you, struggling for words today, but are we setting ourselves up for failure down the road if we get one German-speaking student down, you know what I mean? Or is it best just to include a little excerpt that says, like, translators are available upon request, or, you know?
One thing that I've done in, in companies that I work for is if we have, if we have one higher speaking language, we'll translate it in that, and then the bottom of our documents will just say other, other languages are available on request. And then if you get the request, you can work through getting it translated. Because then if you have those onesies, twosies, you deal with those as they come, and but if you have a higher population, it makes sense to have it readily available.
That's good.
Great. Any other questions for the elementary level?
I'm just glad to meet the person that's actually done this because when I saw all the crossouts of all the words and the words.
You actually tried to read that one?
Yeah.
I was going to compare them.
Well, yeah, to compare, but I just, thank you, because less is so much better.
Brian did a great job with it.
Thank you.
We're happy to have him work on it.
Great.
So you guys will be back on the thirteenth again to give the board a little bite of the apple, right?
If I have feedback outside of this and just going over in more detail, can I just email?
Anybody sitting here?
And then we'll just share with you.
Oh, okay.
Because we want to keep consistent with it. That conversation, I think, is so important in delivering the same message to our families.
That'd be great.
Great. Thank you very much for your work.
Brian, welcome.
Thank you for...
One other thing, are you willing to get this out as soon as we improve it early to maybe your parent groups within your school, or are you going to just wait for open house?
I usually email, I've emailed by now in the past.
Okay. To all families?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
That's a little...
Perfect.
Thank you.
See you on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
I'll be watching on the thirteenth.
Yes, I know. Got Wi-Fi. All right, middle school and high school.
Moving on.
This is so good.
This is like policy.
Let's not do that one experiment.
Okay, guys.
Welcome.
Go up on your head.
Dave, Jay, thank you for coming.
So thank you for sharing the first draft of the handbook with us, and our dessert, we all had a chance to read it, but I... Anything you want to point out as far as changes or walk us through?
Yeah, I can go first. In the high school one, Dee went through, and I don't know if you've ever looked at the one online, but there was like twelve blank pages in it.
Okay.
So she went through and reformatted and cotton-pasted to try and get it down to no extra pages. So that's, that's why it's a little different, usually have the strike through and all that, like, like the elementary did, but when I, when she went through and redid that, she didn't have that. Really, the only big thing I think we have is the breakfast lunch, it came from Chris Barker, and actually, part of that was supposed to get in last year, but you can see what she has changed. I don't know if Dee sent you the document on what she did, but it's under the lunch, the breakfast lunch part. She's updated some things there. And then for the high school, one of the big things, our credit recovery program. And for those of you that are not familiar, the credit recovery program was put in about probably ten years or so with the intent to improve student attendance. And working with Craig Lee's over the last four years, he said it definitely has not done that. And what it is, is, and some of you don't know because I've talked to you and your students have been, had credit recovery. A student per term, so every six weeks, they can make out in four days with those who call up getting penalized for that. If they miss more than four days, they get credit recovery, an hour for every hour they're gone more than four hours in a class. So if they go on to five, if they're gone for five days with the flu, they'll get five hours of credit recovery, they get the first, fourth, fifth, so to speak, and the last one's, they accumulate credit recovery. I guess a number of different issues with that one is they complete the credit recovery during the next term. So instead of getting work done for what they've been gone, it kind of becomes a detention type of a thing because they sit in, and they can't work on the work that they needed to. And also ethically with, if a student doesn't complete their credit recovery, they're getting no credit for that class until they completed it. So withholding a grade that a student has earned for that. So I met some teachers in the high school and talked a little bit about it, and they said, you know, they don't see it as helping attendance like it was originally intended to many years ago. So removing that and working with our current policy, which is also in the handbook, that each student has two days to make up work for one day that they're gone, they talked about, holding that, enforcing that with a credit recovery teacher available if they needed to make up a test after school. Because what you run into is, I'm the math teacher, and I'm also the golf coach. So for my student might be gone on Monday, they have two days to make it up. I could be gone Tuesday and Wednesday. So then what happens for that student? Well, you can say, well, we'll make an exception for them, and then you know how it goes, student B, C, D. So talking with them, we have a credit recovery teacher who's Larry Stevenson, he stays after school every day from three to five, and we talked about using that two days for every day they're gone and having the teachers and the students communicate with Mr. Stevenson. You know, the big thing is making up tests, making up quizzes, things like that, to work with that teacher. So he's still a credit recovery teacher, so to speak, but now it's just a school policy of they have two days for every one day they're gone. And not that eight weeks later, we're going to stay in our room, you know, for two hours to make up for something that you had the flu. And also, we already have a, we've put in a vacation form, so if a student knows they're going to be on a family vacation, they can fill that out ahead of time so the teachers know that as well. So basically, it's kind of not make, it's, it's having, you know, the work made up, but I don't want to call it consequence, because you know a consequence for having the flu, but, you know, having it all time sensitive and relevant to, to when the student missed the work and they're going to make it up. So that's kind of the big thing. So we took out a couple of things with that credit recovery piece. Throughout, anytime we talked about the credit recovery. And one other one is, still I'd said truancy was age sixteen, but you're truant until you're age eighteen. That's for the most part, that's what it was. There's about four different areas where the credit recovery is referenced, the lunch and, and the truancy.
Did we make any changes to the cell phone policy?
Did we? No, why not?
Okay, because that was something we talked about earlier, did it need to be updated or dealt with? I know Shannon's specifically had some concerns about that, he's not here tonight.
And I should have brought, I should have brought, because I do have one report at the end of the year for, for discipline I don't have with me, how many cellphone infractions we had.
Yeah, I think the concern was, the discussion was more around what is our policy for allowing cell phones in the classrooms and the distractions that they create for other students. And some, you know, teachers apply their, the rule different, right? So some teachers say, whatever, I don't care, have them in the classroom, other teachers maybe are more strict about it. So I think that's what our discussion was because there was an incident that occurred where tests were being taken, people were taking pictures of tests, and I think one of Shannon's sons was part of, that's how he knew about it, was because his son brought it to him. And I know that I, my daughter has said it's distracting to her when the kids around her are on their phones, not listening to the teacher, and I think that's kind of where some of the discussion started, and I think you're right, Lynn, that it was, that it was going to go back to administration to either fixing the handbook or to come with other recommendations for policies.
There was a community parent group, too, that came and did a little presentation, and they had some little bit of research, so.
And I don't know that, I don't...
The screen, screens or cell phones?
Well, well, cell phones are...
I know that, I know that's obviously part of it.
Yeah. They came and presented those, but then we continued discussion on cell phones. And then I think they did, that similar group came at another meeting and talked about cell phones specifically.
And then they did policies, and it just seemed like when they talked about it, like there was some disconnect from them.
Well, we even had our student council, student members that were saying, some teachers are making you put your cellphone on a rack or whatever when they come in, and others don't make you do it, and so then people are using them in class. And sometimes they're actually using them for something they're doing as a class.
Right, versus other times where they're Snapchatting.
And, yeah, and I actually, I know that, especially, they do their turnin.com, they do a lot of those different things, so it's all, it's kind of across the board with what they, what they use them for.
So I think, I think the idea was to just look at kind of putting some sort of parameters around when, when they should be, when they shouldn't be, just to give teachers a little more structure that they can use to say, well, this is, this is the policy, right? Or whatever.
Yeah, I believe I don't have it in front of me, but the policy says they're not supposed to be used during...
The policy says they're not supposed to be used in classrooms.
Right, I think the middle school and high school are pretty much identical, and then, but it's up to each individual teacher.
If they want to use it for...
Correct.
Yeah.
If they want them, if they want them.
If they don't want to use it for Snapchat.
Right. But as a general, generally, it is, cell phones are not to be used during class time unless the teacher has obtained permission to have it on.
So then it probably comes down to making sure that our teachers are all, in a similar manner. Because I think that's the other thing that I've heard from students is, well, this teacher lets anybody, but this teacher doesn't let any. So then you have a kid, like, well, what's okay, what's not okay? It says one thing, but any classroom might go into it, it's dealt with differently, so.
I think what people are looking for is clear expectations, especially with our teachers. Kids are going to do what kids are going to do, but the, but our responsibility as administration is to make sure that kids, that our teachers are aware of what the expectations are, and move those to, to our students, and make sure that our students are aware of them. You know, you can't blame kids necessarily for gaps in the, in the structure. So I think it's really our administrative responsibility to make sure that the rules are clearly defined to our students, they're laid out, and that our teachers enforce them. That, that's, that is on us, and I don't think, I don't think the board can make enough policies if the teachers aren't following them the way they should. So I think what we're looking for is a commitment by our folks to make sure that they're enforcing it. And it's, it's pretty clear, you know, if kids are using it inappropriate, there has to be consequences. And teachers have to be held accountable.
There, yeah. There is looking between the two different policies from the high school and the middle school. The high school policy's on page one thirty-five of our board packet, and the middle school's on page one oh five. I do notice that there's a difference between the policies in the middle school, it's acknowledging that devices are part of developing 21st century skills, and then in the high school, it's just a little bit more like, you can't, and here's the, and not that one's right or not, just the consistency, or, I don't know, clear expectations is maybe the thing.
Now that you say that, I remember the group, the parent group that came said it almost seemed like the middle school and the high school were flipped.
Like, you don't see them in middle school?
Yeah, then in high school. So maybe just... So maybe just a, you're talking, I'll go back and just look at those sections specifically.
Yeah, don't pull up here. Yeah.
And just clarity, I would assume that that would help with clarifying expectations of teachers, if the policies are either the same, which I, to me, I mean, there's a difference between high school and middle school kids, but...
But as consistent.
Don't you have teachers, you may have a teacher that's a little bit older, yeah, I asked one in the middle school. So it would be nice if you had some consistency in the way you dealt with it. Consistency in expectations, I think, is that what we're looking for?
Yeah.
That's what I think we have to come back from.
So the other thing that I think has been interesting is when we've been talking a little bit about technology as well, and we're moving forward with having, you know, appropriate technology in our schools. One of the things that we've talked about is some schools using one-to-one devices and how those devices are, those are helpful tools in learning because they're dedicated for learning as opposed to having a cellphone, which is a bring-your-own device, but it also has your Snapchat on it and your names and all of that stuff. But I just think that this is an interesting conversation to have in a bigger perspective, and maybe, I know that we've had a number of different siloed conversations about it, but I think I, to bring it back and have more of a philosophical conversation when we talk about technology and we talk about that kind of stuff, but this is handbook, and there's a timeline for this, too.
And I can have my wife and that screen agent group look at that, you know, this, and see if they have some suggestions to, because I know they've done a lot of research and what's, you know, healthy for kids and things like that, and I think they want to be a resource to you so you don't have to do all the digging, you know, and if there's anything that they can help you with as far as muddling through the mess of trying to figure out what's the best thing, with this, you know, screens and cell phones, they should be willing to help, I'm certain of it.
Okay.
On the middle school one, page one fourteen, it talks about intimidation, and that's in red, so I'm...
Yeah, it's a new.
Yeah, help me out with.
There are two new behavior pieces that were added in there.
That one with the sale.
The sale and the, those are new because of, they kind of came up with incidents that occurred this past school year.
Okay.
So there were specific things. One the board dealt with in January. I don't remember if you...
Slightly.
Remember that particular incident that we brought for the student?
Yep.
That kind of came about from incidents leading after that.
Okay.
So it was, there was some of that going on, so that's why I was adding it, because there was nothing really specific that dealt with that, so that's why I added it.
Okay, I was just wondering why that wouldn't just become, maybe instead of having different things with that, need to be referred back to policy, it'd be added into our, like, the bully piece of the policy, do you know what I mean? So that's more district-wide?
It was more student to teacher.
Okay.
Is kind of where that was coming from, not student to student, but teacher, it was student to teacher.
Okay.
Is where that was stemming from.
Okay. I think we should still look at it policy-wise, because that would be district-wide.
And I believe, I mean, we do have language and policy about bullying and intimidation.
As a district-wide, so it would apply to anyone within the district, no matter which direction, which level?
Yeah. But I don't think it hurts to reiterate it in a handbook, as long as it's not conflicting iteration.
Right. But there's definite, first offense is a one-day suspension, second, I mean, there's definite consequences, and I just want to make sure that we're being consistent all the way through.
It's in a way with the statute, right? It should be statute levels.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's the same as well at the end of the bullying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't take the time to compare those.
Okay. And the other one that I added was, again, a reflective of...
Need.
Yes. Thank you.
Yikes.
Okay.
And a couple of, a couple of elements from the middle school are just, or clarification, there was one under the tardies, switched that up a little bit to where it's going to be by term instead of by half of the year, because that's how it had been. It used to be terms one, two, and three were combined together, and then it was, students would get a fair start at the end of, or the start of term four. Now it's just going to be by term, so hopefully that'll be a little more clear for students and staff.
The fees are in there, too. There's a line in there that talks about, there's an expectation about a fee for supplies, a $10 fee or something like that.
There is a $10 fee.
Is that, that doesn't bump up against anything, is it? Where is that?
At the high school or the middle school?
At the high school.
Oh.
My kids didn't pay. It's okay if his kids pay, but, but, you know, that, I'm wondering how that bumps or that should be, maybe we should take a look at that. I mean, you're supposed to have a free and appropriate education, and, you know, football fees and other things, I don't have too big a problem with that, but that's our population changes a little bit.
Yeah, because I thought for some reason you got rid of that this past year.
I will, so I'm...
Well, you have it at high school.
You still have it at the middle school, too, because I had a phone call a couple weeks into the school year saying you didn't pay your daughter's fee.
Maybe it might be as smart to have even, you know, when you do this, too, I don't throw around money, you know, but it sometimes might be okay to have somebody just review this legally to say, is there anything in there that's going to bump you? I don't, I don't like paying lawyers, but...
I think it was added as a budget issue.
It's been there for a long time.
It has, okay, and I do see, I do see it in there, yeah.
I want to pay for copy paper and stuff.
Sure, but maybe that's a...
Electronic.
I think somebody explained that it was for, you don't charge for paper, is that right? Isn't that better?
Covers the toll and costs.
Toll and costs.
Yeah, because we don't charge students to print.
So it might be fine.
Well, you've got a nice deal going here.
So now, are you telling us we should add a fee? There already is one.
I do see it in there, and yes, that has been added for...
It's been in there for a really long time.
For cop, to, or, just to clarify it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, the pages are there.
As a parent, I appreciate that I don't have to make sure my printed homework's the night before at eleven fifty when my kids procrastinate on the ink.
And like, for the high school kids, honestly, a lot of them, it comes for graduation time because they come up and now it's forty dollars. Because if they don't pay at ninth, tenth, you know, they don't get their capping out until they pay their fee, and it's, well, it's at ten in ninth grade, ten in tenth grade. And I guess when you look at, yeah, what's, what's ten dollars for how much they print, so I...
It is reversible.
And I get a great little price difference.
But if you kind of just explain that that's what that's for, then...
Yeah, we can do that.
And just make sure that...
People feel better about that.
And everything's just buttoned up, make sure everything's buttoned up.
See, if you have a military school, they just say bring three rooms of paper, right? That's how they used to. Then I added a food service piece that was supposed to be in last year, too, and just, I forgot, so it was added in this year.
Where was that?
Under the, it was the same thing that Nate talked about on the breakfast.
Oh, it's on page one oh six.
The second read about no student will be allowed to eat jamal or...
I see, yeah.
That was from Chris.
Okay.
Okay.
I saw there was something about hacky sacks and skateboards weren't allowed or only in designated areas, I think, at the high school?
That's in the high school one.
Yeah, and that's been in the middle school for a while, too, I believe, which is...
People still play hockey?
It comes with. Yeah, it does. And then the parents show them, and they come into school. And then I could see, so just play, and then it's not the entry here, lunch and...
Yeah. All right.
What defines that?
The only, the other thing is just the school board instead of Board of Education.
And where is that?
I just, I just, I just saw it, yeah. I can do a search. It's, I can do a search.
I think I can do it too, and just find, I'll find it.
Do we need to define, so this is on page one oh four, you, you define the one-inch wide for shoulder straps, which just came up in the elementary line. But there's, the language, some shirts maybe cut too low, was changed to shirts cut too low are not allowed. Who's going to decide that? Not, I'm not, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
I'll tell my daughter it was too low, but, who, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. And I also, I do tell the kids, I say enough, it felt, most of the time, but if I see your stomach, you need to get a different shirt on.
Well, but this, I think, is talking about cut too low.
Oh, on the top, okay. Yeah, I, we've had, there were a few students that, it was two, the name section.
Okay.
So they would pull it down.
And then, yeah.
And they would move, yeah, so then I went, nope, that's not going to work.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I get it, I totally agree with it, I don't think it's kind of devolved out to, you know, it says, oh, I don't think this is too low, neither do my parents, and so, man.
Right.
Right.
And usually at the high, at the high school, the toughest days are when kids are dressing up for activities. Because they do, they're wearing nice things, but of course, there are different styles and, then, you know, whether it's school or, or, you know, ten years ago or twenty years ago, and they're, they're wearing, you know, dressing up, wearing very nice, you know, probably expensive outfits, and that's where it gets really, those are tough days when it.
Some parents are complaining, you can't hardly buy things that are appropriate sometimes.
Right.
And, you can, just have to look.
Anyway, for whatever it's worth, I don't know if you guys want to come up with whatever.
If there's a. There's, there's. There's also a, you know.
Yeah, it does give you.
Some flexibility there.
Yeah. Um, just a few pages, page ninety-eight, page one oh four, well, that's in the board packet, so, where, it's Board of Education, it's school board in some places, and Board of Education and all that.
Okay.
It's, it's, again, just really small note. But, are there, so, we've gone through the high school, and we've gone through the middle school, are there any other changes that you guys want to point out? Oh, sorry.
No, I just say the board, okay, Jake and I next week get together, or this week, and, and make that language for the cellphone consistent, and then just get it back to you guys.
Yeah.
Before your next one.
That would be awesome.
So on the same page, and then we can, and even if it adjusts them both a little bit, we'll get that, get that out.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Yeah, that would be great, I appreciate that. Was there any, are there any other comments or questions on the policy?
Thanks.
Or the handbooks, rather? Um, okay, thank you.
If you come back on the thirteenth.
If, if, I mean, I don't know that, do you guys want all the principals here back on the thirteenth, or do you think just if we have questions, or how do you, how do you guys want to handle that? Because this is, I think, knew that we're going through games like this.
The book tabs will be back for sure.
Oh, yes, yes.
The handbooks.
Yes.
Or the handbooks.
Yeah, the handbooks will be back on the agenda.
The handbooks will be back on the agenda for sure.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get these updates to be fed out.
Do we want our principals to come back and have updates for us, or be here as well?
Let's see, which principal isn't here tonight, maybe it'd be like.
It's on.
Son, that blessed John.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right. All right, handbooks. All right, we went through, okay, perfect, administrative and board reports.
Mm-hmm.
Your last opportunity to provide us an official superintendent report.
Well, there are a couple of things I noticed in the budget too, and I wanted you to relax a little bit about the budget, because there are a lot of adjusting entries that are going to take place, yeah. So even though Beth has the cash accruals, not the, she doesn't have the adjustments to the revenue and the expenditure which will take place. But it's, it's going to be close, and you might deficit spend a little bit, but also enrollment counts, final enrollment counts aren't in either. Remember, each student that walks in the door brings, you know, Beth back full of money, so that will take a while for all of that to sort through, and we'll get the details probably later on this summer. So I didn't want you to lose sleep about that. I talked a little bit in about a note I sent you about an organizational chart, and one of the things that I'm going to share with Brad, and I thought probably I should share it with him before I, you know, just unload it publicly, and let him take a look at it. And really, it's, it's basically the idea so that when somebody takes a look at how they're organized, they know who to talk to, and they know how to get the answer that they want. And really, it's transparency. And I think, you know, I'm going to make a couple of suggestions and ideas to him that might help, uh, probably manage the district a little bit. And I was taking a look at a couple of things that I would be concerned with, is, it's what we really do every day, and that's teaching and learning and our curriculum and staff development, and, and those, those things are really our research, our R and D for our organization, and if you don't have a good curriculum, you pay for that in the long haul, okay? And, uh, I also took a look at how you're structured. We, I have to tell you, I'm really quite happy with the people that I've been privileged to work with. They're really decent, good, hardworking people who want to do the kid, good things for kids, and they really have, they really care about kids. They care about people that they work with, they want to do a good job. And so I think maybe we could structure that a little bit differently to give it more of a flow, so you know who, who's on first and who's on second, and what we can expect and not expect. Um, I, you know, this, I think this is going to be my last meeting, but I've really grown very fond of this district, and I really like it, and I like this community, and I feel very comfortable here. So I'm going to miss people I work with, right, Barb? And Nate has shown me things that I just can't tell you about, and he provided me the legs, so it's been, it's been a wonderful experience to be here. I want to thank you for the opportunity, first of all. So, thank you. And other than that, I'll be here to support Var, well, Barb if she needs it, she doesn't need it, but Brad if he needs anything. And I have to tell you, this was kind of a cute story, and I mentioned this to Lisa today, and Kara already knows, uh, my brother called me on the phone, and he said, I hear you hired a new superintendent? I said, yeah. He said, is that the Covington from Olivia? And I said, yes, it is. He said, uh, do you know his twin brother dated your daughter through high school? Really? And then I ran into my daughter, she stopped in to visit, and I said, do you know who I knew superintendent? And I said, it was Brad. She went, what? I've known him, and she had just many, many nice things to say about him as a young person, and I'm sure he's gotten even, be more delightful as he's gotten over. So, you guys did a good job, so thank you. But again, anything you need from me, I would be glad to support you in any way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, because I know that you did this, um, not for treasure, you did it to be, to help our district, and, um, you've really left it in a good place. We have contracts that have been settled, our budget has been settled, um, and it's been really just a pleasure to work with you.
Man, I'm glad I was right back at each of you too.
And you say we when you talk about Recore. So, I, you did that pretty quick.
It's a nice place to be, there's, there's a lot more right than there is with anything that needs to be improved, and your best days are ahead of you, not behind you.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Um, okay, board committee and representative reports. So we have our portfolios. We've been a busy board, but I don't know, let's see where we're all at. Lisa, have you?
Mine did not meet.
Okay. Um, mine haven't met.
Mine have not met.
Mine have not met.
What have we been doing?
We've been hanging out with each other the whole time, all summer.
You've been wearing a super.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's see, and, let's see, any other reports? Oh, there's reports that are included inside of the packet, which we've all had a chance to read. Um, anything that anybody wants to point out or ask a question about?
I only have a question on Stephanie's.
Okay.
At the end, she just talked about, you know, the partnership with Boys and Girls Club and the Kid Stop program, and then alluded to, you know, just, just watching that and the benefits. Where are we at on that, and is that ever going to come to the board at a different level?
Yeah, you know what she's done right now, she's looking, learning, and, uh, she's learning about Kid Stop and how it works. One of the things that we've talked to the Kid Stop folks when we met is that they're giving a very good deal on our space, and we're making an adjustment for this current year, and she's going to look at the possibility of maybe bringing that back home, but she's not going to do that on a rush, she's going to meet with you, talk about how it would work, and if it would be financially advantageous to the district. Stephanie is always looking for ways to enhance the treasure, and you take a look at what she's done in our preschool programs and the things that she's trying to do, uh, she's, she's a go-getter, so, that's where it's at. We're not going to make any big rush decisions. She's going to explore, report, get advice, counsel, and then as a team, you guys would make a decision.
Okay.
And has that been communicated since it's in a, I mean, it's in a public meeting, has that been communicated with Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, we've had a chance to meet with them physically, sat down with them, and they understand that we're going to be looking at that.
Okay.
And we have a contract that's in place, and we know that there's a drop dead date, and so Stephanie's going to be talking to them and learning about the program and what the, where the growth edge is, and if we might be interested in taking that on as a district, but.
Okay.
We're going to look before we leave.
Yeah, there's a number of reasons why we went with Kid Stop.
Contract was a big one.
Contract is a big thing, yeah.
But also the grants that they were able to provide for families and things that we couldn't do that were to benefit.
Their contract, their, their program is popular. I mean, I, as far as the operation and how it works and kids taken care, I have no complaints there.
And they're not having any staffing issues at this point?
No, not right now. They, they have most of this, I think a lot of local folks, a lot of people who probably live right in this area, and so. There are some advantages when you deal with the district, you know, if you're a school district employee, there are some benefits pension-wise and a few things like that, that I think their employees may be interested in. That's not a secret to Boys and Girls Club, I think, you know, they're aware of that. But they're good people trying to do good things for kids too, so, we understand that.
Okay. So, any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I accidentally closed my board book.
Oh, we're closed, we're closed. Sunny. Um, the next, uh, documents that have been included have been from Beth, and it includes a budget to actual comparison report. Um, we have all of that data.
That's just what I was talking about before.
Oh, yes.
I said there are adjustments that are going to take place, and, you know, we're still counting, I, people always say, well, don't you know how many kids go to school here? Well, you know, that's a little more complicated than going into a classroom and counting, you know, one, two, three, four, because kids come and go and change districts and move back and forth.
Well, and even their attendance makes a difference, so.
Sure does.
If they missed a few days, we don't get to count them for the whole year.
Yeah, so, it's all money.
All right. Um, upcoming dates on our calendar, for our calendar, upcoming events, candidate filing opens July thirty-first already.
Come to Barb.
So come to Barb if you're not.
Did everybody hear that now, candidate, it's open for people to sign up.
So.
It's also showing a fifth Monday meeting, and I haven't heard anything.
It said eleven, it's at eleven-thirty, they're trying the lunch one, but do you know where?
I'd have to go pull the agenda, because we, he got an agenda.
Okay, and that wasn't in our packet, right?
No.
No.
Can you send the agenda to the people on the fifth Monday committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we hosting it this time?
I don't believe so.
Oh, are we all on that one?
Yeah.
I just knew it was on my list.
Yeah, it's usually in the evening, and it's, what, four times a year, five sometimes?
It's gone to two now.
Two, two times a year?
And.
They have it for a couple of times a day.
This is the first time they've done a lunch though.
Yeah, um, and somehow I thought we were supposed to host one of the next ones, but maybe, I don't know.
Usually do that, the chamber.
I think of, we hosted the last one.
I'm in like six months.
That's when we get together with.
I was, does anybody want this out? I'm just going to take a picture of my phone.
Why did they decide to do it over lunch?
I think they, I talked about buying something new.
I can make you copies if you want.
Oh, screenshot her.
Yeah, we'll just take.
I don't need a copy, I can't be there during lunch.
Do you still want me to send it to you?
No.
Okay, and another, last day of candidate filing, August fourteenth, at five p.m.
Um, there's really good resources on the MSBA website, um, so, but if you put in MSBA, it brings you to the bar association, so just make sure you put in Minnesota School, yeah, Minnesota School Board, and you'll get to the right place, but if you're interested in being a board member, there's just a really great, um, information, you don't have to sign in, it's free to the public, so.
Yes, that is a very good resource for information, what it's like, what a board member does.
Yeah.
And what, yeah, so, it's great. Okay, anything else? A motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sunny?
Second.
Second by Jason, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.